Yeah.
Yeah. I drove out to Phoenix back in February. And the highest price gas I had was in Humboldt and in Phoenix.
Yeah.
Everything else was cheaper every day.
Well, the three biggest hotels, we, one was in Mount Pleasant and the other was in Hannibal, Missouri. We stayed on the go for three days for a hundred and fifty dollars a night in a beautiful hotel. We paid two hundred and forty in Mount Pleasant. Gee. But we were getting in there at ten o'clock.
Yeah.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Welcome. Good to see the whole house again. Call meeting in order.
Any additions?
Yes. Um, need to add Randy Crepple for zoning report slash update at nine twenty.
Nine twenty. Will that make the motion to accept?
All second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm all carried. Prove the plans. Nope, the minutes.
Well, the minutes appear to be in order from last week. I mentioned it.
No motion to approve.
All second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All carried. Now we go for plans.
Uh, the numbers I had for general were four eight five seven five two point four nine. Four eight five seven five two point four nine and drainage was twenty four three sixty two point sixteen.
Those numbers are what I had written down.
Okay.
One second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Looks like a lot of the allocations are being made for the year.
Yeah, either the third or the year or the year last.
Or the Liam.
Okay, general public concerns. Anybody here for the general public?
I'm here for the public hearing.
That's coming up. Coming up.
Come on, Ben, you can sit by me.
Yeah, same.
Put you in a hot seat right away.
All right. Public hearing for the county budget.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
All second.
They're all thirded. Okay, however.
All in favor?
Aye.
All carried. We are in the public there. In the public hearing for this for year twenty four, twenty five, humble twenty double.
So this was your tax tax being for last year. Just an example, St. Humboldt, the city of, um, the city was fifty one percent, schools thirty, county is sixteen, and Iowa Central, of course, is in that three. And then you add the rural corner township. And that's where the county part pretty much takes over. And we have forty three percent as a county, forty nine for the school, and Corinth Township is only two percent community school at six. So there was a question asked to me, um, about the notice of the public hearing and the annual, the average annual percent change. And just by doing simple calculations, you really can't get to it. So I called Carrie Johnson at the Department of Management and asked her what the calculations were. And she said that you divide the current budget for this proposed year by the actual column. And then you find the square root of that number, subtract one, and then multiply times ten to get your percent. Clear as it's not written anywhere, so anybody really knows what it is. So as a comparison, this is our revenues. And if you can see it very well. It is for the taxes levied on property, eight million, two hundred and thirty two thousand, we can't read it. Two nine seven. And last year the taxes levied on properties was seven million, one hundred and two thousand, eight sixty eight. So farther down here, and if you go to county revenues, the voter approved local option sales tax. That is five hundred thousand, um, estimated. And that is your one percent extra tax that was voted on by each rural city and incorporated. And that goes towards secondary roads. And then your community betterment projects such as libraries, animal shelter, elder bridge for the elderly, D-SOC, community and family resources, and other, um, community-based services to the residents.
For all the communities? Outlining communities involved this time. Rutland wasn't a couple of years back, right?
Correct.
Now they are.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just making sure.
Yep, they did. Vote on that.
Right.
And then the next one is our state shared revenues. That's primarily for secondary roads. And that includes your road use tax, farm-to-market funds.
That's revenue that doesn't come from county taxpayers.
Correct.
That comes from the state.
Yes. Your state.
When we do bridge and road projects that qualify for state money.
Well, the two hundred, that's road use tax funds. Money that the state gives us to maintain and operate and take care of.
Comes from the gas.
So anyway, at the end, it's the fund balance. You can see it's eight million, nine hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. That will probably go up because the revenues that we get aren't all accounted for. There might be penalties and interest that are gained on taxes, um, extra filings from the recorder's office, or licenses, or registrations from them too also. So that generally increases, but we figure it low to make it so we don't get in trouble. And okay. So these are the service areas in which everything falls. The greatest one is your transportation and roads. Um, public safety is next at twenty eight percent. Administration is at eighteen. County environmental and education is conservation and that type of thing. That is seven percent. Capital projects is six percent. And physical health and social services is that clean. So if you go into your service area, you see that the first one is service area one, that is our public safety. And what I have highlighted here is five hundred and twenty five thousand. That is the county's contribution towards the Unified Law Enforcement Center. We pay seventy percent per currently, and then the city of Humboldt pays thirty. So it's unified. And then next is our adult.
Is that the same every year?
No.
Always seventy thirty or?
It's been seventy thirty since the inception of the building down there. Um, it's up to the special to change because our population has changed.
Well, that's what I wondered. I heard you guys talking about that a couple of weeks ago, so.
That's going to be between now and next budget year's discussion.
I mean, unfortunately, it doesn't change your taxes. It just shifts it from this pocket to that pocket.
Right.
If you're in the city, you're gonna pay a little more, county pay a little less.
And it's expensive. And it's so programmed.
Highest cost to the county.
The next is your adult correctional services, which is your jail, of course. And the total on that is six hundred and five thousand, three eighty seven. Um, with that, we do get revenues that come in because we house um, prisoners from other counties and they have to pay rent, so to speak. And then next is the county's contribution towards the emergency management and to the nine-one-one service board. Um, in particular, this nine-one-one service board um, can only pay their administrator out of this fund. They can't take it out of the, what is that called?
Surcharge.
The surcharges. So that's.
The surcharge come from your cell phone bill.
Correct.
And your, if you have a landline bill.
Service area three is your physical health and social services. The first one is public health. And we give to that seventy thousand. The support of the hospitals is ninety five thousand. And let's the services to the poor is fifty thousand, seven hundred. And then the VA, their budget is a hundred and two thousand and eighty four. And let's see here. Sure. Okay, this is your youth guidance. Um, this would be juvenile detention area. And Bruce can tell you that there's a lot of counties that can't budget for this appropriately because we don't know, they don't know how many youth are going to be using their services. Webster County has a really hard time with this. And it can become very expensive. We're fortunate that our community is pretty very good.
Depending on the amount of them. What they're in there for and their attitude, it can be up to four hundred dollars a day that we could get charged. So thank God, our kids are behaving enough that we because they don't know how to, how to budget half a million dollars to spend on something like that. It would cripple us. So knock on wood, hopefully continue that better.
The last one on the service area is your opioid. And we have received opioid um, assistance from the litigation settlement. And this year we have allocated ten thousand. And that's because it's still under development with the public health department and the county, and they are doing it for drug addiction and alcohol addiction. So like I say, we're still working on this and putting things together.
All that has to be used in certain criteria for people from our county.
Yes, only on our county.
So it has to be followed to make sure that the people from our county.
Yeah.
Which is.
And I think they're really close to getting something done. I went to a meeting last week with them and.
I heard that.
It sounded good. The next service area is six, and that is your county environmental and education, such as conservation, weed eradication, and your solid waste. Um, it pretty much stays the same. It doesn't vary too much on that one. The next one would be your planning and zoning. And then our allocation to the Humboldt Housing and Development part of Iowa Regional Housing and Humboldt County Economic Development. And those are all for community betterment to enhance our community and entice more people to move in. Educational services. This is where some of the local option sales tax money goes. And it's for your libraries, the county fair, and other educational services. And again, we're back to secondary roads and service area seven. And this is our largest budget area due to the nature of our county being rural. It increases this substantially. Um, it'll provide for maintenance and new projects on gravel and county blacktops. And last part of that is our partnership with Midas for the service area eight. This is where elections fall into. Um, it has increased this year substantially because of the general presidential election. When I look back four years, it was quite a bit more, but I tried to take in consideration, you know, that we had the COVID. And so I wiggled that stuff back out. What doesn't get spent goes back into the general funds. So it's not lost and it's not sitting anywhere. It goes back into our carryover.
So Chris from Nate, update the election equipment. Do we get charged for that or is that a state?
Oh, no, we get a lot charged for that. And everybody, well, I shouldn't say everybody, but quite a few counties are updating their equipment right now. Um, I chose to wait while it wasn't a presidential election.
It's probably a little cheaper in just off years.
Well, if you're gonna have something happen, that's not
A glitch.
A glitch that you don't want it when there's a bunch of people standing in line and, you know, the PEOs have to learn new um, programs and machines. It's just better to do it next year.
Perfect.
Um, this is our state administrative services, such as your motor vehicle registrations, driver's license, and then like the recorder's office for recording their birth certificates and death certificates and stuff like that. Service area nine. The big thing to note here is our mental health. We actually go through Rolling Hills Mental Health Services and they provide the money for us. And this is what the budget for that department will be. It's ninety five thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars.
And we're with the group.
Yeah.
Of other town or other.
Western Iowa.
Yeah, Western Iowa is what I want.
Which I hear is changing.
Yeah.
In the near future. Next one's administration, um, risk management. It's your tort liability, your insurance, um, Um, Iowa Municipalities, that were Workers Compensation Association. We were told to budget for a thirty percent increase on this. It's probably pretty true. And this is just a summary of totals for your service area one, which is your total of public safety, was four million, three thousand dollars, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. Service area three was your pub, physical health and social services at four hundred and seventy-five thousand one ninety-six. Service area six, county environmental education, is one million, five thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. Roads and transportation in service area seven, four million, five hundred and twenty-nine dollar, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. Service area eight, governmental services to residents, which was six hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and five dollars. Service area nine, administration again, was two million, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. Service area zero is your non-program expenditures, dispersments, and other financing. Um, where I have highlighted, it's five thousand, and that's just a dispersment. But there's also your, our long-term debt service. That's for, I think we have a loan on the L E C project. And then capital projects that are planned within the county is the following one. And here you can see a comparison. The pink is the twenty-three, twenty-four budget last year's and the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five in the blue. And they all have increased between the county, the city of Humboldt, Iowa Central, and Humboldt High School. Some more than others, but it just shows that we've had such an increase in inflation. So with that.
Good.
Do you have any questions?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for looking into this percentage change for the round, which makes no sense to me. It really doesn't. It's not common sense. I've never seen that before in my change before. I don't know. I, I go ahead. Yeah, I don't know how the state figures this. So nothing that you figure yourselves. We probably the ninety minutes. So I'll just thank you for looking into that.
Well, yeah, I tried several different ways to come up with the number. I'm like, it just doesn't work.
Yeah, I Googled it, all the different things. It's, yeah, it's a, it's a mystery. But okay, that's, that's all I'm gonna say on that. The other thing is just the, the number one line upon your budget that the college and stuff. If the property or taxes levy on property, that's what everybody pays their personal property tax on.
Okay.
It's going up one point four million dollars from last year. Is there any particular, you know, item that's causing that to blow up? Or group lighting?
Um, basically inflation on being able to, you know, your heating, your electricity, uh, insurance. That type of thing. We've had, the operating expenses are, really have increased substantially this year.
That's twenty percent over last year, if you figure the correct percentage change. I call my percentage change. It's, it's up twenty percent. So inflation is probably, you know, part of that. Is there any new program? See, I know you had COVID last year.
Yeah.
And is there any, I hope it was what I call one in nine, that money was spent on it for a one-year budget and that it didn't create a continuous bill for every year from the drawings.
Also, we had to figure in this year too, with the new house files, was it seven eighteen? They had changed the way our credits and exemptions are for like your sixty-five plus, your military. There was another one. They are not reimbursable by the state. They come straight from our budget, so that affects us directly also.
Yeah, I know, uh, the rollback increased a little bit. I guess compensated from the state, I don't think. Is this the rollback?
No, no. That's the other part. And then the way that, um, commercial and industrial is considered now is the first hundred and fifty thousand is roll back the same as your residential home where you residence. And that, we're losing revenue also.
Okay, just one other question and I'll be done. I did an unofficial, unsigned to be feel. I compared Wright County land, ag land to Humboldt County ag land. What I did is not really official. I, I took Highway seventeen, I went on the forty-eighter track on the east side of seventeen, and I converted to the forty-acre track that looked familiar, similar on the west side. And I found out that it was two dollars an acre higher in Humboldt County than Wright County. That was just one comparison. That was, you know, a big deal that, uh, I just thought I'd just, that's something that I saw.
And that's something I have done also. Oh, I've called people I knew who owned land in Wright County. And their statement was ours was a couple of dollars less than theirs. It depends a lot on the type of land, I imagine.
Are you trying to convert similar?
Comparing, yeah.
No. That was just, I guess that's all I got.
Any other comments? Questions?
Maybe I can move on to close the public hearing. I got eight fifty-seven.
Second, Bruce's motion. All fair?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh four dash oh two. Prove the Humboldt County budget. Do you wanna make the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the Humboldt County budget, resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh four oh two.
I'll second.
I'll second. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gary.
When is the date? It says beginning of May?
By the end of the month, April thirty.
All right, moving on. Ben, you're up.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. I've got, uh, two funding agreements for approval today. Uh, the first is a funding agreement between the county and state of Iowa for Bridge Thirty-Six replacement. This is southwest of Harvey on Texas Avenue. Um, by Dean Kidley's old place. Uh, it's a single-span concrete bridge that was built around nineteen, nineteen fifteen that we're looking at replacing. Uh, and we're gonna use state funding for it. This is the funding agreement that covers their portion of it. What's the timeframe on this one? Uh, as soon as they approve my plans for it, right now I'm shooting for November letting. There's a lot of environmental hoops to jump through. Um, Army Corps permitting D N R. Uh, they wanna do a historic bridge study. Um, trying to work with the city of Humboldt's, uh, Historical Preservation Commission to see if we can get, utilize them to do the historic study as opposed to hiring an outside firm and paying a lot, four, five thousand dollars to have them write the same type of report.
Okay. I got one other question, just a thought process moving forward. Uh, this is a concrete bridge, right? Part of the concrete abutments and stuff?
The existing.
Or is it, yeah, the existing or is it all?
Uh, it's concrete, concrete abutment, uh, steel I V engine, concrete down.
And typically they just bury that concrete on its side or they haul it away?
Uh, depends on the contractor. A lot of times they will crush it and haul it away. Um, they've taken it to Grunbeck's pit before. They've hauled it back to their location. Uh, rare instance, uh, the D O T will allow them to use it as rip ref for a job. Um, usually due to the age, that's not likely an option.
My thoughts were, I was wondering if we should save our concrete and then pile it somewhere and somebody have a pressure coming and crush it for us rather than bury it or give it away. Or that's just a thought to maybe think about.
I mean, it's, it's definitely an option. I know talking to, uh, Marcel and them, what they typically pay for time to crush is similar to what we pay to haul it straight out of the quarry.
No, that answers that question.
Good question though.
Yeah, well, I saw it run by you.
Yeah.
I see everybody does that.
Yep.
I know they do it down at the, or the regional landfill. They take concrete and then they bring a crusher in and crush it.
And it's, and, and this is just going off of Marcel's prices. Obviously, I haven't, I haven't made the price in phone calls myself.
Okay. All right.
The biggest issue with that is the location.
Yeah, you take, you gotta get a huge pile to make it worth them bringing pressure.
And the only two places that I can think of are the landfills.
Yeah, and then you get, yeah, on the D N R.
The D N R.
And you know how much you like that.
Yeah, I love them very much.
I know. Well, that's a good point. But everything's obviously in order, Ben.
Yes.
I've been making the motion that we approve the funding agreement for Bridge Number Thirty-Six replacement with the Iowa D O T.
Second.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, Gary.
So you said this would be a November letting. Would this be next year's?
Next year's construction.
Construction.
I mean, the, the design is eighty percent complete right now. The biggest hangup is gonna be dealing with the D O T and all the environmental rules to get through, so.
Hope for no snails, pets.
Listening to my eating, they're doing some.
Yeah, that's a big one right now. Uh, the second item that I've got on the agenda is to approve a T S F funding agreement for installing additional flashing lanterns at some of our higher accident intersections. Um, it covers up to ten thousand dollars from the state of Iowa to purchase eight red solar powered flashing lanterns intersection of, uh, P thirty-three and C twenty-six. So that would be the stop signs on the Redland to Boe Corner. Um, P twenty-nine and C forty-four would be the high school blacktop and the Claire blacktop. C forty-eight and Lone Tree, they used to be Jake's Corner. Uh, southeast town here. Uh, P fifty-six and C twenty-six, that would be the intersection of County K Road and the Bradgate to Hardy Blacktop. Um, and P twenty and C twenty would be up near Edison. So, uh, the D O T, we submitted for funding from the D O T a couple of times, but I feel like the last time was around the end of the year. And we received notification that we were approved for up to ten thousand dollars in funding, so. Uh, we, I believe we applied for one each thousand and recovered all of our intersections that have had, uh, major injuries or fatalities in the last ten years, so.
So the numbers one through five, are they the in order? I mean, if we only got funding for three, would you do the top three or?
We've got funding for all five.
They're all five, we're committed.
But I submitted, I believe, eight or nine intersections, so, uh, the question that I wanted to pose is are we willing to spend additional money out of our pocket to cover the other, uh, the other intersections?
Do you think this whole funding will come up again in a year or two?
Yes, it comes up every year.
Well, it's a supply next year.
Okay.
I agree. Well, Ben, thank you for doing that. I remember with the discussion.
I know these flashing lights don't stop them because.
They're, they're not, they're not gonna stop them.
They still go through them sometimes.
I mean, it's, it's to draw more attention to them.
It helps, especially on a foggy evening or something.
Get their attention. By the same token, speed limit signs don't keep up, people don't speed, so.
But this is a safety factor. And I think it's a good idea, and thank you for applying for that and getting it. Make a motion that we approve the T S I P funding agreement for flashing beacon installation with the Iowa D A C.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Gary. Okay, anything else, Ben?
Uh, beyond that, we began hauling rock here, uh, in full force about a week ago. Uh, we'll be continuing to do that over the next few weeks. And get our gravel road back up to, back up to Snuff. Uh, we're in full quotes, I believe, are due the end of this month. I've received three, I believe, for closing the monitoring wells at the old landfill. Um, bids for the building are due May second. Uh, we have a bid letting for two bridge replacements next Mondays. Uh, nine o'clock, I believe. Um, I did wanna talk to you guys about, uh, posting some, a couple pieces of our equipment for sale on, uh, one of the online auction sites like Big Iron, Purple Wave, um, Gov Bids, I think is another one, or Gov Deals. Since we took the doors off of the tin shed here, more people have noticed the old, what is that, a forty-seven international truck, our old spray truck was in there.
Kind of a collector's item.
Must be. People that are more mechanically inclined than I can help could do very nice things with that machine. Um, we've got a small roller that rarely gets used that we look at putting on as well as a, um, like a World War Two generator.
Absolutely.
Since upgraded, and so if you guys are okay with it, I'm gonna talk to some surrounding counties and find out what sites they've used for that type of equipment.
Yeah, I think you'd get a better price to them now. It gets off their.
That spray truck would be under a hundred thousand?
It'll be under a hundred thousand, yes.
I thought that generator got sold a couple, three years ago.
We upgraded the generator last year when we bought a, um, Miller welder generator, uh, combined. But we didn't sell the old one. It got parked in the, in the tin shed. We're waiting for either, uh, a, a county auction or to have more than one or two pieces of equipment to put up on one of these sites. Um, like I said, now we've got three or four pieces that we can put up and I instructed the guys to get things up and running, get a video of it, so we can post that on the site as well. I know they already have the drop on them.
They did or didn't?
Did.
Oh, awesome.
That'll make Bruce wanna buy it even more.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, beyond that, that's all I have.
Yeah, one question for you.
Sure.
Did you ever get that additional water tank purchased? No. Talk with Todd. Have you two talked?
We've talked.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, anything else for Ben?
Okay, so are you quartered away halfway with your rock or?
Um, we've got quite a bit hauled stockpiles. Uh, it's gonna be hauling from stockpile out. Uh, budgetary wise, we're about half through. Uh, actually hauling out onto the roads were maybe ten percent. A long way to go.
Thank you.
Hey. Kyle.
Okay, this is an update really on that motion that we had a few weeks ago regarding the central sport. That motion that we had a few weeks ago regarding essential sport function fifteen and how I would change it and then let you guys know exactly what it is. I took a thirty page document, narrowed it down to eight pages. Uh, it was, as we looked at, it was a mess. Uh, it is now cleaned up in on page. Two. This will only go in as, as the previous one stated. Humboldt County Board of Supervisors has the final authority to approve all information released to public. For, uh, for media for Humboldt County. That was during an emergency, that was during a non-emergency. This will only go into effect when there is an emergency or a disaster. And then on section two. Letter A. Basically it says you guys gave me the permission to speak on your behalf, gather information on your behalf. Disseminate that information on your behalf. That does not prevent me from then going out and saying, hey, board supervisors. This is what's going on and this is what's being said, so you all have eyes on that. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys had this information if you have any questions on it before. It officially will get sent to the state and then to FEMA. So the rest of that, all that is just narrowed it down, Joe, from before, so. I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, it more reflects what we do here in Humboldt County rather than.
Missed the odd version.
That's all I wanted to do is just make you aware of what we're gonna, your portion of it now, like I promised I would.
Okay.
So would there, would this be able to be updated yearly? If something changed that you didn't like the way that wording was?
Absolutely, yeah, yep. And that is a great question. Any of these, all fifteen of them can be updated as things change throughout the county.
Well, we don't, we aren't looking for a catastrophe to. See how our procedures work, but I, it's nice to know that. Or at least prepared or hopeful. Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yes.
Anything else?
That was you, I think. Anything else?
Oh, anything else? No, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Just checking, um, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on. I, uh, was asked to put this on here for the River Development. Remind everybody to think what's best for the county. And I believe the. Brett and Deb's done a presentation.
I do. Uh, we presented this as the River Development Group on Wednesday to the Conservation Board. So this is also directed to you and I will give you all a copy after I've read it through. Board members of River Development Inc. proposed to sign a contract with the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors or Humboldt County Conservation Board. To purchase the Reasoner Dam for one dollar. The River Development Group will apply for the FEMA grant to replace the gates with a new Overmeyer gate system. And possibly the Mill Race gates that are mentioned in the March twenty eighth D N R report by Nate Pugavine. The Humboldt County Board of Supervisors or Humboldt County Conservation Board. Would need to sign this grant application as this is a restricted grant for municipalities. River Development is requesting the balance of the ARCA money be used for the county's participation level of matching funds. River Development Inc. will fund the excess expense of this project. Please note, there will be no cost to the taxpayers, county, or conservation board. River, River Development Inc. will take possession of the Reasoner Dam when FEMA and the D N R allows the transfer. River Development is currently researching an insurance policy that the same carrier Humboldt County has for their insurance. Time is of the essence. We are nearing the fall twenty twenty four deadline for the FEMA grant. Application, and there are other grants that are five oh one C three would qualify for. We kindly request an answer regarding your intentions within thirty days. And I will pass on the copy list to you. I've signed it as the president of this River Development.
And I think everybody got to see, uh, the deal that Nate from D N R put together. So over the weekend, I talked to Rick on Friday a little bit about some of this and, uh. So I put something together over the weekend just to. Make the project a little more affordable. I don't know if everybody will accept this or not, but it's just a simple drawing there. If we cut the. All the boulders and stuff instead of putting across the whole dam, and I don't know if this is acceptable or not, I'm just throwing this out there. We could save a lot of money, um, still put the map, and then we'd save the fishing, the, the regular dam. Um, for the fishermen so they could fish up against the dam. Put new gates in, the, the whole key to this whole thing is the gates. To hopefully help clean it out and keep it flushed out. And the reason for our proposal that way is we won't have to use our money. If there's, uh, you can get eighty five to a hundred percent of FEMA money. Would apply towards the gates, so that's why we went with the new twenty four foot gates. Um, if you guys flip to that last page that I handed you. One item that saved a lot of money, yep, compared to the D N R proposal, we take out that cement wall along the rocks. And that's one point four million. And then we're also throwing in the Mill Race gates into this project. If it would qualify under FEMA, and these are things we have to keep pursuing. I don't have a definite answer for you, but we're just throwing this out there. So that gets that cost from three point four down to two point two. And then if we have to pay fifteen percent, um. You know, between the county, you know, what they have left in that ARCA fund or whatever the name of it is. And we would pay the difference, it'd only be three hundred thirty thousand. To get the new big gate split in, then we would proceed with the rest of this project. Then if you go to the middle page, I'm just gonna listen to it, basically study later. Nate's, Nate and Paul there was nine million dollars. And by only putting rocks on half of it, and then we're gonna put that cement wall. And if we left the silos in the middle. Then we could feather those rocks down and save a ton of money on all those rocks and stuff, cause that was six million dollars. Approximately six million dollars originally. So that gets it down to four point eight, and then. Off of the axiom report, we threw in, put new steel in front of the silos. And that was six hundred eighty grand, and then overlaying that map. Which on, which would be the east dam. On the bottom of it to stop the toe from erosion and to help with the safety feature of, uh. Minimizing your, uh, undertow risk a little bit. It's not gonna stop at all, my understanding, but it would help, it would help that a little bit. The other thing, I reckon I had a little conversation about, and thank you, Rick, for coming down and talking.
Yeah, my job to listen to.
Yeah, well, thank you. Um, part of this is, and Rick's concern is very legit about qualifying for this FEMA. We had a great conversation with him last Wednesday at noon, and they're more than willing to help us. Uh, writing, getting good grant writers. And what would probably qualify and what wouldn't qualify, cause they don't wanna go through the process either. The east dam, part of what we're talking about is in Nate's report was cutting six inches off that to. Skid it down to put good Overmyers on, so we have a good clean service. Well, then the west dam would be a foot taller. So in the past, and I know Todd can tell us what year we added. Onto the top of that west dam, but we would knock that down plus another six inches, so all that. Would give us some more credibility towards FEMA, and then is all you do is. Uh, raise up the Overmyers flashboards, you can make them taller. So we can maintain our pool height that is permitted in the summertime, so that's a simple plan. But it saves a lot of money, you know. We get down to five million bucks, time you get some grants and stuff applied for, you know, the stuff we're gonna do later. To assure you guys we can pull this off. You know, there's lots of programs out there, we found more all the time. And by the time we fundraise and do a lot of this work ourselves. Save money off the proposal on rock and other things. You know, I'm hoping we only have to raise a million and a half to two million dollars, which I think is obtainable. So we're not asking for any money from the taxpayers. But I just wanna show you phase two after we got the gates put in and. This is not exact, it's not, you know, probably will be changed a little bit from this, but just to give you a general idea. What we think will happen in the future. The other things we've, our group really wants to get involved with is. Um, getting the fish hatcheries going again for a school project, these would be things down the road, that's what, how important the river is to our community. I'd love to get a school program going to. A high school program where they can raise the fish and put in the ponds and possibly sell some, to make enough money to break even. Um, putting like that rock dam that was down by the water plant. If you could put a series of them in to hold a pool of water, you know. Foot and a half, two foot deep, and then it squeezes in the middle, so in the summertime when there's no water in July and August. Then, uh, people on intertubes and kayaks and stuff could at least go from. The dam down to Turtle Park or somewhere there, and then I had a call from somebody yesterday. Wanted to know what's going on with Swan. Swan Pond. And wanted to know, is there, if we're not gonna get swans, is there any way to. Put some blue gills and sunnies and some other small fish in there for kids fishing pond. So there's just, I mean, there's tons of interest, we're getting calls all the time and. These things aren't huge expenses, the, the, the stuff's there. So we're just begging that you guys will not. Take option two and try to work this through and see where we go with it. Thank you.
The Swan thing, that's a city project, right?
This, Swan is a city project, the D N R discontinued the Swan Restoration Project because it was such a success that there is a. A breeding natural population, and I see a lot of them dying or at least those that died.
Okay, we can pick some Canadians over there, they got. My backyard this morning, they'd be. Kids would like them.
Well, we'll take this into consideration.
Hey, Brad, I got a question.
Yes.
Is FEMA okay giving the county money? And then the county transferring ownership? Like, you know what I'm trying to say, like, is that kosher with FEMA?
Well, we, uh. We'd have to get a definite answer, last one's they would, I mean, those things we need to ask.
Yep.
I'd love to.
I, I.
I'd love to have you go with, you know, have a meeting with them and so everybody hears the answers.
Yeah.
But I know all that's obtainable and it has to be done while the county or Conservation Board owns it. I have to ask that, I don't know.
It might be a problem, so that's, we should find out. I mean, all this needs to be addressed, that's why I said I don't wanna rush to.
Cut it down, cause once you cut down, it's gone, you know, so. I know everybody's, it's been ten years, minimum for everybody.
Yep, and I would finally get to something. Yeah, so that was one thing, I just wanted to make sure that it was kosher and that the county would end up. Getting in trouble for taking the money and then transferring ownership, or taking the money with the intent of transferring ownership immediately upon completion of that project.
And I can't speak for our five oh one C three. For sure. But if that was the case, and we fundraised and knew the money went towards fixing the rest of the dam up like we're thinking. If they're okay with that, I, I would think our group would be okay with it, cause we're just trying to save the river for our community, however, however it is. So, as long as the money went to saving the dam and. Fish hatchery and down below and everything, you know, we're, we're all in favor of helping anyway we can.
Uh, Brad, who, who is it you've been visiting with at the?
Dusty, is it Pognis or what else?
Yeah, Jonathan, I think is his name, but he calls himself that's.
It's, what's, what's the last name again?
Penogus?
P O P. P O G O N E X.
I'll get you his number.
Yes, okay.
I'm guessing if you make a mess of it, they're used to it?
Well, if I asked with Dusty, there's probably not too many Dusty's there.
But when you say Penogus, then you're gonna say, oh, we know who that is.
As soon as he's got his.
I've got, I've got the number on my phone, okay. Oh, thought our nails on how they said.
Five one five, three four four, nine zero four nine.
What's that number again?
Five one five, three four four, nine zero four nine.
Okay, thank you.
And he transferred to a new department, but he said he's willing to help us through this process, cause they haven't put anybody else in the other departments. Been very friendly, very kind, helpful. You heard something?
Yeah, I got a question. Saying in your future, five, ten years down the road, whatever it takes, or whatever happens. You guys decided you can't raise anywhere money and can't fund it, what happens to the dam?
That's a, there's not a crystal ball, there's, we've got young people on our board that believe in it. It's not all people our age, there's a lot of interest with other people out there, I, it's. I don't, I don't, I just don't see that happening.
But it wouldn't be coming back to the county.
No intention of that coming back to the county, absolutely not.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you once again.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Randy still on there?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Oh, you're on, yeah, I was looking in the hall for you.
I was too, I didn't see anybody upstairs, so.
Sorry, I couldn't make it in person, I, uh. Had a, a little change in plan and Trish, I appreciate you getting me on here, so. I just have a couple of things for the zoning report. Uh, one is, uh, I've been working with Stacy Franklin, uh, of Geo Permits, working on our, uh. Digital per, uh, permit program and, uh. We've basically, basically completed using our paper programs. Uh, or permits that we've been using and transferring those into a digital format. And so we're getting close to actually being able to put that online. And, uh, replacing our, uh, our paper permitting. What they refer to as a workflow has basically been completed, I call it a step by step procedure. Uh, like you'd go online for anything and, and you go through part of it and then ask you go to the next step and so on. And so, uh, I'm gonna be doing a, a test of that and I'll probably have somebody else do a test of that. We'll tweak that a little bit and then be able to bring that to you. And hopefully to the any other offices in the county. Uh, that would wanna look at it, maybe see what their possibilities in, in, uh, utilizing this digital programming. Uh, I think it's gonna be a great thing. It's gonna take a little bit of time to transfer over. But, uh, uh, I think we're, we really did a, a, a great job of finding this, this company. Uh, Stacia is our project manager, she's been extremely helpful in, in, uh, setting this up. And so I'm really confident that we'll be able to do that. And, uh, we'll try to bring that to you. Uh, and any other offices that would like to look at it and probably some video form. So that you can see how this, uh, this plays out. And so, um, it, it would be my hope that that wouldn't be too long of a timeframe before we can do that. And so that, that's the first item, any questions on that?
No.
Okay, second item, uh, the Board of Adjustments met last Thursday. Uh, in a hearing and a meeting, and the hearing part was. To, uh, hear a, uh, application for a variance. By Glenn and Holly Lyons on West Fork Drive. They wanna add on to the north side of their garage, six feet, and by site visit, it showed that. Uh, by doing that, they would be in violation of the ten foot requirement for a side, uh, setback. And so they, they applied for variance. Uh, and, uh, the Board of Adjustments voted unanimously. To approve that, and basically that decreased the setback distance to six feet. Uh, there were, um. No other, uh, individuals, uh, at the hearing. Uh, and I sent out public notice and also letters to adjacent landowners. Not heard any information back from any of them in, uh, in opposition. I also talked to Greg Emick who lives next door, he had no opposition to it at all. And so the Board of Adjustments approved that unanimously. And so, uh, I'll be contacting, uh. And so uh, I'll be contacting uh, Glenn and Holly. Uh, that uh, it has been approved and as you recall, you have thirty days. For asking of a review for that. I would uh, request and recommend that that thirty days uh, would be reduced. I know this is not an action item for today. Uh, but maybe within the week for next meeting that uh. That that possible thirty days could be waived. And so we also met uh, as the uh, board. Uh, as I told you before, they're going through the requirement of the ordinance. For uh, procedural things for meetings and hearings for the Board of Adjustments. And as you well know, we have four new members and so that uh, that document is in about the third uh, draft. And hopefully we'll be able to complete that in a short period of time and I can bring that to you and show you what they've come up with. Uh, I think it's important so we make sure that uh. All of those meetings and hearings are done exactly the same every time. And so then we would have a full board and full operational procedure and uh. For anything that uh, you know, is needed to, need to be done in the future. That's all I have.
Okay, anybody get anything else for Randy?
I don't have a problem with changing the thirty days, but I guess. If we put that on next week's agenda, you'll have seven days for the people to think it through. And if they decide, well, we're gonna, we're good with that. We we would know in seven, I hope in seven days, what their thoughts would be. That would give us the opportunity to either waive it or. Change it, my opinion.
My request is based on the fact that there was no opposition uh, addressed by any of the uh, adjacent landowners. And for, so that I can tell them that they can start preparing uh, for the construction.
I understand. I'm just saying seven days next week, we would know for sure if they, the neighbors decided they were. As good next week as they are last week, so.
Did you, Randy, did you notify all the neighbors up and down the street there?
Yeah, so the ordinance requires within two hundred feet uh, of that property and they were all mailed a notification.
That's fine.
Yeah, it's fine as means to put that on next week's agenda.
That the question is, does that really need to come before the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Adjustment?
I don't know if we even have to waive.
There's a, is that there, is that, Randy, is that a, for you, do we have to waive it?
No, you could wait the thirty days if you want to. I'm just saying that if it's possible. To, for you to waive that, then that would provide them with a little extra time to get uh. To get the construction going. You can wait the thirty days, obviously. And uh, you know, so it's entirely up to you. Uh, I didn't check to see about the legalities of the waiving of that. Uh, so it's just my recommendation and request that if that's possible, that we could do that for them.
Let's just put it on next week's agenda. That'd be seven days and we could waive it then if there were, nobody complains or.
And if nobody's complaining, I don't think there'd be an issue with them moving forward, so.
Yeah, my question is just that that isn't a Board of Adjustment decision, not a Board Supervisor.
Yeah, that's not our.
I mean, that's, that's why I don't even have to come because if no one is, why does that come back to the Board of Supervisors when it's? Been presented to the Board of Adjustment, if there's no conflict, that would be their discretion.
I think then why they have the thirty days is because then we have time to come back and say, hey. Um, please, Board of Adjustments, review that if we do hear from somebody. That's why they have that thirty days.
And I think the reason they want it waived is so they can start construction with the insurance that nobody's gonna.
We need to check. Sure that we can waive, you know, waive the thirty days. I I don't see where there would be an issue, but I think we need to check with John just to make sure.
They've, they've all been properly notified.
Correct. Yep, I agree.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, moving on down, the approval appointment of Kenny Borland as medical examiner investigator. This come about last week, we approved it, we'll make it official this week.
And we've got plenty of discussion on that, so I'll make a motion to approve Kenny Borland as medical examiner, examiner investigator.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Jerry.
Welcome back.
Uh, discussion on possible action on sanitary position. Uh, the Board of Health meeting Friday, I talked to Kenny. He is going to work for the city of Port Dodge. He said he's tired of driving. He's drove all of his life and he figures that uh. This is a mile and a half from home. He can drive there and not have to worry about it, so. From talking with him, I asked him if there was any applications. He said he thought there was two. I don't know how everybody feels about this, but this is the second time in what, two years, three years?
Yeah, probably less.
That we've had to look for a sanitarium. Do we wanna look for another county to join or do we wanna go part-time on our own? Or do we wanna stay at Pocahontas and see what they come up with?
Well, didn't we check with Wright County and at the time, they, theirs was really new. I thought that if I remember the conversation, theirs was really new and they didn't wanna put. Having them jumping back and forth, maybe. Maybe we search.
We'll have a conversation.
At least talk to them.
Yeah, I agree, Bruce.
I would agree with that.
If you're. Buying in with somebody else that's already established as opposed to, we're gonna have to go back through the training. Viasco over here and I'm not deserting Pocahontas by any means, but by the same token, we gotta try to keep somebody that's.
Yeah, this time of year.
This time of year, we're.
We need him.
We're gonna have to hire somebody else anyway.
There's his last month's report there and uh. Most of it's in Humboldt County, looks like to me, outside of his schooling and stuff.
Well, I can understand his. Thinking.
That's why I had it put on there, you know, what do we need to do? Because this is getting ridiculous that. We can't keep a sanitarium in this county.
Yeah, and then we go through the constant training.
Gotta have training and he was still going through training. He's got a couple of trainings in there in the last month.
I did at ISAC, it wasn't this last one, but the one before, and he said that they were open. To sharing their sanitarium now, but I haven't talked to him since.
Who?
Who was that, Sandy?
Rick, Rick Rasmus and I did talk to him.
Okay.
But all three of them, we were at a table together. I think it was all three of them were actually there.
But they were new, so.
Yeah, she was there at the time. Well, that's been.
A year.
Month ago, a year ago.
Yeah, it's been there over a year now, probably a year and a half now.
Yeah. So. Do we wanna follow up with trying to see what do we can do with Wright County or do you wanna?
Yeah.
Just wait and see what Pocahontas does.
I'll be checking with Wright County.
Yeah, I, I think we need to be checking with Wright because, um, like you said, it's been way less than two years. I'm thinking maybe a year and a half and they've gone through two.
Another option, just throwing it out there, just like throw different ideas around. Randy, you still on?
No, he's still on.
Oh, all right. I can't ask him that question then. Possibly having our own sanitarium zoning. And part-time assistant out at secondary roads. Cause we outsource quite a bit of stuff, because Ben's busy, Dave's busy. Um, that'd be a good location for it. We'd have a permanent employee that wouldn't be bouncing around constantly from here to there. Uh, Ben puts it in his budget every year.
For.
For an assistant.
And what would they do? Decide to be the janitorian?
Do driveway inspections, things, things that relieve Ben to do other things. Take some of the work off of him so he can do engineering stuff.
We have an extra pickup out there instead of driving and paying mileage. We can get them into that extra pickup that's about to.
I mean, we're paying for a benefits for a, we're paying part of his benefits. We're paying forty-six bucks an hour. Something like this to Poki, because we cost share their health insurance, their mileage. Every time he drives over, we pay mileage.
Well, we're paying mileage from Port Dodge becomes to Humboldt County, he pays from his home.
So it's, it's something to think about. I haven't, I haven't, I haven't even talked to Ben about it.
If we got, if you got what you're looking for and we can put it all in a pool and make it work, I think it would be.
I mean, if you're in attracting enough position, the person will stay.
Yeah, I mean, I might consider stopping driving.
Yeah, it might be a good job for you. I don't think you'll fit for all those whole coverage.
I don't think I'd fit well in a septic tank or anything like that. My stomach's a little gaggy, but.
I don't know.
I think it'd be worth looking at. See what Wright County does, see what, or see how, let's talk to them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk with Ben. Somebody wanna talk with Wright County?
I'll give her a call. Thing there is that they're doing a good job and they, they know they're doing a good job in Wright County. You have someone.
Well, we can't jump into this immediately. I'm talking probably a year from now.
Right, so you, right now that we're.
Right now, we gotta come up with something.
That's why they're talking to Wright County right now.
But I think this is something to look down the road for, but we gotta have something soon, so.
Through Wright County.
I think she's got uh, from what Kenny said. They've got somebody from like Buna Vista or High Oak County kinda covering for us.
Buna Vista over here.
Yeah, we'd be much better to go that way and pick up.
So.
Twenty miles.
Talk to, gosh, with the Poki lady. I can't agree.
I'll give her a call. You give me a number for it. I'll give her a phone and I'll give Rick a call, report back, put it on next week.
I guess just see what, if Rick would let us.
Right.
Use if we're in a bind, if, at least until.
But right now it's construction season. We need somebody for septic tanks and. And wells.
Yeah.
And he's got in their report there, I think there's two or three times that he's run to. Storm Lake or someplace to take water samples.
Run the water sample over. Yeah, that's probably something like.
Yeah. I'll, I'll call Rick and I'll call Poki, talk with them. Get the feelings out. We'll put it on next week's agenda.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on that? If not, approve a class C liquor license without load service and Sunday sales for Humboldt Country Club.
Well, this is kind of. I don't know. It's a quirky little deal. I see I got an email over the weekend, yesterday I got it. That said the licenses for dram shop policy have been canceled and requires attention.
Um, we can't.
Yeah, we can't, okay.
We can't okay it without the dram shop.
And I talked to Missy Friday. And she thought everything was in order and when I got that, I was like, you can't do that then.
Well, well, let's table that one.
It'll be a dry weekend.
There'll be a, there'll be a bad week of golf, I'm guessing. Might just drive by with a beer can and go and cannibalize it a little bit. Drive up and down that hay field, sales might be high.
I will give her a call.
Dram castle date was April twentieth to twenty-four. Insurance was April twenty, twenty-four expires April twentieth, twenty-five. That's their insurance, but the dram shop they do not have.
So my question, if she provides this in the next week, could we? Have. Like a boat?
conditionally?
Well, just.
Oh, I like it. If it shows up in three days.
Tomorrow and rather than keeping them on business for the week, I'm not saying that they're gonna. Pass out from not having alcohol, but I'm sure it's part of their sales.
They're without a license as of Saturday.
Last Saturday.
Well, I just wondered if we could do it.
I think we've done that before.
Conditionally?
Conditionally, when they bring in the proof of insurance on that dram shop, then it'll be approved.
Could make that motion.
I'd make the motion if, if they can prove out, provide you with the information, Trish, and you get back to us, we can do that, but. If it isn't provided, we can let it sit there till it is.
Would that be approved conditionally with proof of the dram shop insurance?
I would make that motion, yes.
I would second that motion then, so if they can provide it, we approve it.
Any other discussion on it? And we will approve it if we get the dram shops and everything in order.
That's for mixed drinks, right? I don't know what it is.
Beer and everything. Yeah.
So what's the class C retail?
Class C is everything. Class A, I think it's wine and class B is beer or something. Class C is all alcohol.
And that was approved, but. Oh, I don't know. Let me check on it.
Make sure she's got all the in dram shop and insurance. If she don't have it, she, they can't sell liquor. All right. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Jerry, Thomas Mady reports.
Jerry, past Tuesday, the sixteenth, uh, Rick and I met with the. Some Webster County folks, along with Ben and Todd. At uh, Webster County Conservation Office there at Kennedy Park, discussed the bike trails. Uh, program that Webster County has going on and possible connection between Webster County and Humboldt County. So that was the gist of the conversation. Rick can add to that if he'd like. But that was uh, last Tuesday, the sixteenth that morning. That's only kind of semi-official thing I had last week.
Okay, and Monday afternoon, I met with Trish, we had a Zoom call with Denise from our insurance. Trying to figure out why our self-funding was hit so hard last year. Um, some of it. Just a small portion, like twenty-six hundred dollars, they discovered was miscoded. Um, Blue Cross. Uh, she's gonna come up in August and sit down with the full board and we're gonna go through it real hard. And see what the numbers, she says she's gonna get deeper into the weeds, as she said. And I do believe what it is, it's a lot of employees had small claims. Cause our self-funding covers you from the deductible five thousand down to. What they're carrying with their single employee or family. So we have a lot of small claims that gets hit hard.
Was there still the discrepancy with chiropractors?
That's the one we're talking about. That was at twenty-six hundred dollars. Uh, but we still have the issue where majority of our chiropractor coverage isn't with our in-net provider, which would save us a lot if. We could get that changed, but chances that is slim to none, she says. And that's a deal, Blue Cross. Uh, that was Monday. Tuesday, I went down to Webster County with Eric. Um, we talked about the trails connector paved from Free Rivers to. Badger. Um, Matt Cat Cosgrove and Todd are gonna write a grant to. Tap, is that transportation alternative?
Program.
Program or something. Basically, it's for trails. Um, that would be the core grant. If you would receive that one, then you can. Apply for other grants to help get the cost down.
That grant has to begin by May tenth?
Yes. Yes, and their map is capable, Denise is capable of writing that grant.
He is.
So there's no grant costs there ready, and Todd was gonna sit down with him, write that. Um, and uh, from what they're hearing is there's not a lot of people applying this year. So we should have a good shot at that. Uh, Wednesday, you know, let's see, Wednesday, I had a housing meeting that got canceled, so then I went over to the uh Public Safety Building, and uh Dean Kruger had called me in the morning and we had some people there from Motorola. Our dish up on our tower, a microwave dish that connects us to Fort Dodge, when the winds get up around fifty mile an hour, it does this.
I would too.
Yeah, and it uh loses signal, pops off, pops on, pops off, pops on. And what happens then is, like a deputy will be calling in, he'll lose his radios for maybe a minute or two, well, a minute or two can be, or it could be longer, depending on how hard the wind is blowing. Or ambulances or fire calls, it's kind of crucial that usually when you get most of your problems is during a storm, seems like. Well, Motorola's fix is eighteen thousand dollars. Yeah. And basically what they do is they bring uh hardwire our our consoles out to the tower for the C I N network. And that's I, I see, I see, I see, and I said that backwards. And that will give you a backup, that when the thing goes out, it automatically goes to this ICN network.
So would that be like at the high school, that tower, or what if we were?
Well, it's the tower by the high, by the building down here, the, the one we strengthened to.
The one that we updated.
Yeah, keep that from happening, uh, they're gonna have a different tower company. When they're in the area, just stop by and take a look at it and see if they have any solutions. Uh, new towers are half a million dollars. Yeah, and so that's at Motorola, Boone, Boone has had some issues with this, they they're in the process of putting up a couple new towers, so.
Well, Matt just volunteered to let K H B Peace Tower be used, that was nice of him.
Why, why didn't they think of this when they designed that and looked at that tower? They got to, mercy is on them that you get wind.
Murphy said they could do it, strengthen it and make it secure, and obviously that, it isn't. It works great for forty mile an hour winds, but you get, it's an eight-foot dish up there and I know sometime ago, a bracket broke. It could've been from all the vibration and whatever, the bracket broke and they had to go up and fix that, that was an insurance claim from the wind. Um, and we asked Motorola, is this like a Band-Aid that? He says, well, in a sense, he says this is a Band-Aid, but it's something that even if you put up a new tower, you would need to have this connection done, so it wouldn't be money wasted going down the road. But also it's eighteen thousand dollars.
Well, regardless, it's still safety.
It is.
Yeah.
And we can't look the other way and say, well, it only happens once a month, it's once a month that we're got a deputy out in the middle of nowhere, or a fire truck or an ambulance.
Yeah.
Trying to hear.
And the thing is, they'll, they'll be talking and they, and they won't know what channel to switch to unless they get on a cell phone and call dispatch. And dispatch will tell them, switch to this channel, it's, it's really difficult, it's.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you and I, you told me about this, it's, basically, it's an automatic switching mechanism.
Yes.
So that it does it to the, it switches it to the channel automatically, which is like Rick said.
Well, the other option, I said, is it a cheaper version? He says, yes, the dispatch operator can walk out to the shed, go in the shed, unplug it. And then call all the individuals in the county who need radio service and say, let's switch to this channel.
Well, that'd be.
Which is not very automatic. No, which, he says that you can do that, won't cost you hardly anything, but that ain't gonna work real well.
Personally, I think Motorola's put the shaft to us when we built that thing down there and done it.
Motorola put the shaft to the whole state of Iowa.
Yeah.
Yeah. When they got the state bid for this new system that they sold, anyway, that's my opinion, okay. That one gave me
Well, if we need it.
Indigestion all day. So.
If we need it, we need it, we're gonna have to do something with it.
They're gonna come to our public safety meeting next month and explain it to everybody, cause I, and I.
You did a pretty good job.
Well, I, and, and uh Chris, our IT guy was there, Joel Sanders was there, uh Dean Kruger was there. Tim was there, even Kyle was there. And I said, it would've been nice to have somebody from the city there, I just went there because he called me eleven in the morning, said, hey, these guys have been down at Boone, they're passing through, we need to talk to them, so. So it was a short notice, um, that was Wednesday morning, Wednesday evening, I went to the conservation meeting. Sat and listened through that and talked a little bit about that TAP grant. And then uh Thursday, I had a four and a half hour meeting out at the hospital with economic development. It's kind of uh, basically it was guidelines that we set for Alyssa. Showing her the direction we want the, for her to go and ways that she can show accountability to us. You know, so, but that was four and a half hours and we, she still wanted to keep us a little longer, but people had to go. No, that was my week.
Going, I had, uh, I didn't attend it or listen to it, I called in and they had enough people for my uh finance meeting for I'd know, so being as I was gone, she said, don't worry about it, so that was it for the week.
Sandy, what do you got?
Okay, on Monday, the fifteenth, um, out at the hospital, we had a um opioid presentation um, for the gal Haley, and I forgot her last name. Um, that's helping with Humboldt County and Palo Alto, what they're doing with their opioid money. Um, she's gonna come, of course, before the whole board, once we get everything kind of nailed down. Allison Hauser was kind of facilitating that, uh Kristen um Sugal was also there. And I think who else, if there was someone else there, but anyway, she's had great success over at um, Pocahontas County and Palo Alto, so um it was a very good meeting. And that was Monday, the fifteenth, and then Tuesday, the sixteenth, we had the um Humboldt County Opioid and Alcohol um Coalition uh meeting. And then at nine, or also the same day, the sixteenth, we had the Humboldt County Food Pantry Board. And then Wednesday, the seventeenth, we had the ministerial um board meeting. And then also kitty cat um daycare.
Sandy, how's the attendance at the ministerial?
Um, not great.
I'm on the spot, but I, and I know that can change from day to day, hour to hour with the minister. There are one phones all the way from leaving for Mayo or Iowa City or something, but it's hard to get that group together.
A- and also, it's, it's not just that, but we've had a huge turnover in ministers in the last year. And that makes a big difference, um Oak Hill's getting a new one, I think he's there now, but he's, I think. And then also then you've got um the Methodist Church, um they're gonna be having a new one. Um, the gentleman that they're having is an interim and he's, I think, two months. And um, yeah. Sorry I was late getting on, I didn't realize, I shouldn't say, I didn't realize, I forgot that um Arizona doesn't uh participate in daylight saving, savings time, so they're two hours. I just remembered it the last minute, and you know, it's really weird, I just noticed this, all of my times on my calendar changed for what they were for up home, I was looking that, I'm like going, what's going on, then I realized what it was.
I imagine it's sunny, blue skies down there today, isn't it?
No, it is, it's um sixty-four degrees already, yesterday it was ninety-three, I think, was the high. So.
Same here.
Yeah, it gets really boring having nice day after nice day.
But I'll tell you, we go for a morning walk, and if you don't go in the morning, we went for a walk not yesterday, but the day before in the afternoon, I thought I was gonna die before we got back, it was way too hot to be out walking. But that's all that I had.
Okay, uh, housing meeting on Wednesday, the seventeenth, got canceled. So I went to the conservation meeting, sat through them, just listened to everything. And you know, it's Friday, I went for the board of health meeting. And uh, we'll go read that. And present through the program over there. That's a cool official I had. Is anybody going the twenty-third over to Pocahontas for the uh Johnny Arts?
Yes.
Mess up here, Washington.
Registered to go over, so I can cancel that. That's all I had, have you got any? You're good?
I'll make a motion to adjourn then, second.
Any discussion? No, adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'll tell you.
Alright, we'll see you. Wait, bye.
Good job with the budget, that's about as confusing.